Adrian N. Breitfelder, City Clerk, you are hereby directed to call a regular session of the City Council to be held on Monday, July 7, 2025, at 6:30 PM in the historic Federal Building for the purpose of conducting such business that may properly come before the City Council.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to a regular session of the Dubuque City Council for July 7, 2025. As a reminder to our participants, you can provide in-person input or virtual audio and written input during the sections of the agenda where public input is accepted. Input options during the live meeting include: In-person attendees may approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any public input on the item they would like to speak to. Remote attendees can log into GoToMeeting using the login links, phone numbers, and access code that appear on the broadcast and livestream and posted on the front page of the meeting agenda. This option includes audio input and written chat input. If you are participating via computer, indicate which item you would like to speak to in the chat function, or note that you would like to speak during the appropriate section. If you are participating via phone, indicate which item you would like to speak to during the appropriate section. All comments, whether in-person or virtual, must be accompanied by a name and address. Additionally, written public input is accepted by contacting the City Council directly from the city's webpage at www.cityofdubuque.org/councilcontacts, enter the City Clerk's Office email at ctyclerk@cityofdubuque.org. This information will be reiterated during the meeting. Attendance for the session is as follows: Mayor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Councilmembers Farber.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Resnick.
Here.
Rousell.
Here.
Sprank.
Here.
Wethel.
Here.
City Manager Van Milligan.
Here.
And Assistant City Attorney Lehman.
Here.
Thank you. Mayor Kavanaugh, I will turn it over to you for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Adrian. I invite all who are able to please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first presentation this evening is the Governor's Volunteer Award Recognition.
Got to sit closer.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Gina Bell, Director of Sustainability. And tonight, I want to honor Jessica Andershaw. She has served as a Green Iowa Maricor member in the Office of Sustainability since December of 2023. And this award recognizes her multiple service terms with Green Iowa Maricor. She left the plastics industry to become a sustainability professional. And in the office, this is what she's learning. To date, she's completed 1,667 hours of service. She took a brief hiatus to become a mother, and then returned to service. And she is a valuable member of our small but mighty sustainability team. And she has plans to return for a third year of service in the office. So it's really exciting. I want to highlight just a few examples of the great work that Jessica has done. She consistently meets Green Iowa Maricor metrics. So that includes energy audits in homes and weatherization services, tree planting. She's provided outreach and educational events. And this includes a weekly commitment at the Dubuque Farmers Market to advance the goals of our Climate Action Plan. And so each section is featured in a different week. She consistently is learning and growing and brings a can-do and willingness to our office. She's made policy recommendations for the Resiliency Commission to review and then put forth to you all. And most recently, she took an idea of growing food in City Hall planters, and she put it into action. So working with our Parks and Recreation Department, we planted, we tried to do greens, didn't work out. But we eventually got to Swiss Chard, which I guess is a green. And she harvested it, and then she gave it away at the Farmers Market booth. She gave away about 50 pounds there, along with information about why local foods are important to greenhouse gas reduction. And then she and her colleague, Bella, in our office also then harvested the rest and donated it to the food pantry, which is always looking for fresh vegetables. So we're really proud of her, and this is a well-deserved honor.
Jessica, congratulations. That is fantastic. I've had the pleasure of working with you several times on a number of different things, and it's always a pleasure. It really is. It's obvious to me that you get all those things done. In working with you, I see that all the time. And I just, I don't think this community can thank you enough for all the work that you've done. That's a lot of hours, and to be committing more, that's a lot. So, thank you. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Our second presentation is Dubuque Area Chamber of Commerce's Chamber Chair Award Recognition.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Great to see you this evening. Thank you for this opportunity to be here tonight to talk about my friend and colleague, Todd Dollsing. He recently was awarded the Chair's Award by the Chamber Chair for the 2425 fiscal year, Chad Walbers, who is the President and CEO of Crescent Community Health Center. It is the most prestigious award that the Chamber gives on an annual basis. It is a point of privilege for the Chamber Chair to make that selection. And it can be given to a person, it can be given to a group, it can be given to an entity. But it's about those individuals or groups or entities or organizations that help fulfill the mission of the Chamber of Commerce and continue to advance the priorities of our business community. And so after careful thought and consideration, Todd Dollsing was chosen, someone you all know well and love. But it is my distinct pleasure to share a few reasons why he was chosen. Todd has been on the Chamber Board since 2020, but he's long been a friend to the Chamber of Commerce. I've known him since day one, when I started here in 2007. Not to take away from the work that the mayor and City Council do surrounding air service, or that Greater Dubuque Development Corporation does, or the Chamber does, or the county, we're all working on this collective priority. It's all very important to us. We talk about it all the time. But Todd Dollsing is in the trenches, day in, day out. He lives this. He breathes this. He sees this. He champions this. And he is beyond the airport. Those things that we love so much in our community, the airshow that we just saw on the Fourth of July, every single year, he's doing the airshow on holidays. He's going to communities throughout the tri-state area, doing the skydiver jumps with the Golden Knights, and doing airshows across the community and across the county and region, in fact, so that we might all enjoy the holiday. He's there when it snows, and we need to get our flights, and the runways need to be plowed. He is an unsung hero, and I'm so proud to call him a friend and a colleague. So I've talked a lot about what he does. But Maya Angelou once said that it's not, people will not remember what you said or what you did. They'll remember how they made you feel. And I will tell you that Todd Dollsing has the rare gift to make you feel like, when he's talking to you, that you are the most important person in the room, whether you are his team member, whether you are his colleague, whether you are our staffers and elected officials. He has this gift. And I'm so proud to call him a friend and colleague, and there's no one I could think of that was more deserving. So congratulations, Todd.
A couple words here?
Please, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, yeah. So actually, I want to thank, of course, the Council for all their support over the years, the awesome staff at the airport, the Airport Commission, all of our tenants at the airport. They're the ones that make this possible for me. So I'd also like to recognize Chad Walbers with the Chamber of Commerce, and of course, Molly and her entire team. So, thank you very much. Absolutely. Todd, this is well deserved. You know, I get the rare opportunity to see you at work very often in the work that you're doing with the commercial air service side of things. And in doing so, hear a lot about everything that goes on at the airport and all the work that you're doing in the community. So I was not surprised at all when I saw this award was being granted to you, because you absolutely have been doing so much for this community, and it is very well deserved. So thank you. I'm glad you're getting the recognition that you deserve, because you do this very quietly, very often. So thank you very much for everything you do, Todd.
Thank you.
All right, Adrian.
We'll move on to proclamations. Our proclamation this evening is Dubuque County Fair Week.
It's fair time. I know we have some friends from the fair here. John Breeze, Kevin Coats, come on up. Feel free to say a few words before I read the proclamation. We're glad to have you tonight.
Good evening, Councilmembers, Mayor. It's our 72nd fair. Things are already in full gear, getting ready for everything. My first fair. I started in October of last year, so it'll be interesting for me personally. But we're hoping that everyone can attend this year. All of our entertainment is included with admission to the fair. So that's something different. All the grandstand, all the grounds acts, everything is included. And we're just hoping to have a good community event.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Kevin Coats, the President of the Association, ex-general manager. And John's doing a great job. What they're doing for the fair this year is making it affordable. And so much to do for that $12 admissions. And the Board of Directors has done a great job, and we appreciate all the city's support.
Well, thank you both. Yeah, Kevin, it's great to have you here again, see your service continue in this way. And John, welcome. Glad that you're here for your first year. It's been a great one so far, I know. So thank you very much for all the work that you're doing. And we're excited about Fair Week. So thanks for being here to accept this proclamation. The City of Dubuque Proclamation: Whereas the Dubuque County Fair is the largest and longest celebrated family entertainment event in the county, now in its 72nd year; and whereas the residents of Dubuque and the surrounding cities have been persistent in the success of this great community event; and whereas the Dubuque County Fair continues to bring together family and friends, both rural and urban, in a way that respects tradition while remaining current; and whereas the strong rural traditions of our community are celebrated with the support of the 4-H and FFA youth, as well as volunteers who share generously of their time and talents; and whereas the Dubuque County Fair, with more than 60,000 annual attendees, directly benefits the county by driving economic development in the region; and whereas local nonprofits rely on the annual fair to generate funds that are cycled back into our community to serve the greater good; and whereas the Dubuque County Fair is among the area's top entertainment value, featuring everything from creative arts exhibitions, races, tractor pulls, and demolition derby, to the numerous animals, exhibits, ground entertainment, and music acts; and whereas the Dubuque County Fair, which many consider the sixth-best days of summer, officially opens on Tuesday, July 22, and runs through Sunday, July 27, 2025. This year's theme is "Making Memories With You at the Fair '72" to help celebrate this anniversary. Now therefore, I, Brad M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council, staff, and residents of Dubuque, do hereby proclaim the week of July 22 through 27, 2025, as Dubuque County Fair Week in the City of Dubuque, Iowa, and encourage the participation of the city's residents. Come on up.
Thanks a lot.
Yeah, please.
Thank you.
All right, see ya.
We'll now move on to consent items. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting in person who would like to discuss one of the consent items, please approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input and state your name and address. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function, or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input. If more than one participant would like to speak, then the city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Please state the item you would like removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion and consideration. And consent items can be found on pages 2 through 4 of the agenda.
Thank you, Adrian. We have anyone here in chambers who would like to remove any of the consent items for separate discussion this evening? Seeing no one here, anyone virtually?
No.
Thank you both. All right, back to the table then.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Wethel.
I would like to hold Consent Item Number 5 for separate discussion and consideration.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Rousell.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to hold Number 9 for separate discussion, as I am the Executive Director of Dubuque Trees Forever. I have no financial interest, but I would like to abstain from that vote.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Rousell. All right, we have numbers, just a reminder, numbers 5 and 9.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Resnick.
I move to receive and file the documents, adopt the resolutions, and deal with the consent items as recommended, except for Number 5 and Number 9.
Second by Farber.
Got a motion by Resnick, second by Farber. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Rousell.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye. That motion passes 7-0.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move that we receive and file the documents and approve the agreement with Greater Dubuque Development Corporation.
Second by Farber.
Got a motion by Jones and a second by Farber. This is to receive and file and approve the documents for GDDC. So Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Rousell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye. That motion passes 6-0. And then on to Number 9. So Ms. Rousell already stated she wants to abstain, so I will entertain a motion here, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move that the Council receive and file and approve the Metro Coalition Cornerstone Agreement.
Second by Wethel.
Got a motion by Jones, second by Wethel. This is to receive and file and approve the cornerstone agreement only. So Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Rousell.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye. That motion passes 7-0.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move that we receive and file and approve the contracted services agreements with the exception of GDDC in this motion.
Second by Farber.
I got a motion by Jones, a second by Farber. This is to approve the agreements with the exception of GDDC. So Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Rousell.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye. That motion passes 7-0.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move that we receive and file the documents and approve the agreement with Greater Dubuque Development Corporation.
Second by Farber.
Got a motion by Jones and a second by Farber. This is to receive and file and approve the documents for GDDC. So Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Rousell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye. That motion passes 6-0. And then on to Number 9. So Ms. Rousell already stated she wants to abstain, so I will entertain a motion here, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move that the Council receive and file and approve the Metro Coalition Cornerstone Agreement.
Second by Wethel.
Got a motion by Jones, second by Wethel. This is to receive and file and approve the cornerstone agreement only. So Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Rousell.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye. That motion passes 7-0.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move that the Council receive and file and approve the Trees Forever contract.
Second.
Got a motion by Jones, second by Sprank. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
That motion passes 6-0.
We'll move on to items set for public hearing. We have 1, 2025 Maintenance Dredging Project: Initiate Public Improvement Bidding Process for July 21, 2025.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Sprank.
I motion that we receive and file, adopt the resolution, and set the public hearing for July 21, 2025.
Second by Wethel.
By Sprank, second by Wethel. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Rousell.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye. Motion passes 7-0.
We'll move on to Boards and Commissions. We have applicant review for the Transit Advisory Board, and appointments for the Arts and Cultural Affairs Advisory Commission, the Historic Preservation Commission, and the Transit Advisory Board.
All right, thank you, Adrian. So the first applicant review is for the Transit Advisory Board, one three-year term through July 30, 2028. We have one applicant, Alex Cruzy. Do we have anyone here to speak to this application this evening? Anyone virtually?
No input.
Okay. Then we'll move on then to the appointments. So our first is on the Arts and Cultural Affairs Advisory Commission, one three-year term through June 30, 2028. And we have three applicants, Nick Halder, Erin Haefel, and Sarah Degiree. So I would ask that we take a roll, please, and everyone can choose one of the applicants.
Rousell.
Nick Halder.
Wethel.
Erin Haefel.
Jones.
Nick Halder.
Sprank.
Nick Halder.
Farber.
Nick Halder.
Resnick.
Nick Halder.
Kavanaugh.
Erin Haefel. So Nick Halder is appointed to the Arts and Cultural Advisory Commission through 2028. Historic Preservation Commission, we have one three-year term through July 1, 2028, and one applicant, Janice Esser. So I would entertain a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
Would Janice Esser be appointed to the Historic Preservation Commission to fill the vacancy through July 1, 2028?
Second.
Got a motion by Jones and a second by Sprank. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Rousell.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye. Motion passes 7-0. Final appointment is the Transit Advisory Board, one three-year term through July 30, 2027, and one applicant, Gary Wernemont. I'll entertain a motion, please. Hearing no motion. Hearing no motion, we can move on to the public hearings.
At this time, anyone participating in the meeting in person who would like to discuss one of the public hearing items, please approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input for the public hearing you would like to speak to, and state your name and address. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function, and state your question, or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input for the public hearing you would like to speak to. If more than one participant would like to speak, then the city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Public hearing number 1 is Hold a Public Hearing for Adopting the Public Housing Authority Annual Plan.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Resnick.
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second by Wethel.
Got a motion by Resnick, second by Wethel. Mike, please.
Thank you. Acting Housing and Community Development Director Cory Burbach is recommending City Council hold the public hearing on July 7, 2025, to receive input on the Public Housing Authority Annual Plan and approve the adoption of the Public Housing Authority Annual Plan. HUD also requires that the resident advisory board comprised of all residents on assisted housing review the proposed plan. The resident advisory board meeting was held on May 28. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request Mayor and City Council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are in a public hearing to consider City Council hold a public hearing to receive input on the Public Housing Authority Annual Plan and approve the adoption of the PHA Annual Plan. Do we have anyone here in chambers to address us on this item this evening? Seeing no one here. Anyone virtually?
No input.
All right, thank you. And before I bring us back to the table, Eric, could you hit the button to turn the live feed off, please, on the screens that we're looking at? Thank you very much. Okay, back to the table then for any discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Resnick.
So do I understand to say we're having the public hearing then tonight?
That is correct.
So this is the public hearing on this motion, and any questions about the Public Housing Authority Annual Plan? We should be, now's the opportunity.
Yes.
Because I would love to hear, and our residents maybe could use some information about this. Is there someone who could talk to us about this plan and what it means for our residents here in Dubuque?
Sure. Cory Burbach, Assistant City Manager and Acting Housing and Community Development Director. So this plan is actually approving the annual plan, which you approved as a five-year plan for in March. So in March, we sat down with our Public Housing Authority and laid out plans for the next five years using HUD dollars. And then what we do is each year, we bring back one year of that plan. And the attachment that is included in the agenda identifies which of the actions we think that we are going to tackle in the first year.
I see. Thank you. And if you wouldn't mind, maybe if you could tell us what the first year is going to bring us?
Absolutely. If you give me just one second to pull the attachment up, I sure can. If you wouldn't mind, I'm going to come back to you in just a second. I'm having a hard time loading it.
Sure, that's fine, Cory. Yeah, we can, we have any other questions or discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I know that you've often talked about the importance of housing and what we're going to be doing. And I know that every year is important, and we usually build on the plan. So I'm just looking for maybe the direction it's going to be taking where we are now and how we plan to build the plan in the next few years.
Thank you. That was the perfect pause. So some of the items that we identify in the plan, we look at the housing needs in the community. So we look at the mix of rental versus homeownership. Affordable housing in particular is something that we have been focused on for the past few years. So some of the items that we would use this funding for would be to assist with either rental programs, and that could be things like rental assistance, or it could be in instances where we are working on rental units, helping, perhaps if we had to temporarily relocate someone. We also use these funds for homeownership programs, and that can be in a variety of ways that we bring to you through the annual housing budget.
Thank you very much. And the funding, is it, is funding every year? We wait to see. And what's the funding level this year in round numbers?
That is a good question. I don't have the number in front of me. Because of the way the federal fiscal years have been shifting, and we've been waiting for some news from the federal government, I can get that answer and follow-up for you.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions? Okay. All right. Well, the motion here is to receive and file and adopt this resolution. So Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Rousell.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye. That motion passes 7-0.
Public hearing number 2 is Petition to Vacate Certain Street and Alley Right-of-Way Easements in Julian Edition in the City of Dubuque, Iowa for Vacating Petition from Elaine Reese and Doug Blong.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Sprank.
I motion that we receive and file and adopt the resolutions.
Second.
Got a motion by Sprank and a second by Wethel. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Engineer Gus Sahoyus is recommending City Council approval to vacate and dispose of the street and alley right-of-way easements in Julian Edition in the City of Dubuque as shown and described in the exhibits which are attached. Per the attached vacation petition letter from property owner Reese and Blong, they are requesting that the city vacate the existing street and alley right-of-way easement so that they can consolidate several of their existing properties into one property. Reese and Blong plan to convert the consolidated area into a prairie use and protect the property from being developed in the future. The area to be vacated will not affect other adjacent landowners, as Reese and Blong own the property on both sides of the right-of-way, or the subject right-of-way areas are inaccessible to the neighboring property owners due to extremely steep topography. City has no plans to open or improve said streets and alleys, and has agreed to vacate the right-of-way easements at no cost to Reese and Blong. Reese and Blong will be responsible for all costs for publication and filing fees. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request Mayor and City Council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are in a public hearing to consider City Council approval to vacate and dispose of the street and alley right-of-way easements in Julian Edition in the City of Dubuque, Iowa, as shown and described in Exhibits A and B which are attached to this item on the agenda. Do we have any public input on this item tonight? Seeing no one here. Anything virtually? Thank you both. All right, back to the table then for any discussion. Mr. Jones.
Just a point of order, there are two resolutions.
I did hear an S.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, I heard an S at the end. So thank you very much. You did make a motion to, resolutions plural. But thank you, Mr. Jones, for checking. Any other discussion? All right. Motion here is to receive and file and adopt the two resolutions. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Rousell.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Public hearing number three is rebid 2025 repair and maintenance of the Iowa Street Parking Garage public hearing.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Wethel.
I motion to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second.
Got a motion by Wethel, second by Jones. Mike, please.
Thank you. Director of Transportation Services Ryan Nuckey and Project Manager Jim Bosley are recommending city council approve the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost of $4,450,000 for the 2025 repair and maintenance of the Iowa Street Parking Garage to the adoption of attached resolution. In May 2025, the city issued bids and only received one bid proposal for the 2025 repair and maintenance of the Iowa Street Parking Garage. The single bid received was significantly over the current funding available to complete the construction improvements as proposed. As a result, the city council rejected the single bid due to a lack of competitive bids and insufficient funding. Following the bid rejection, city staff and the consultant team collaborated and reviewed the scope of work for the project and the base bid and alternate bid items to determine a path forward that would address the main repair priorities of the needed improvements to meet the current available funding. The team also discussed and extended the construction schedule, completion date, to allow contractors more time to complete the ramp repair work, and there was a consent item on the earlier agenda which sets a bidding schedule. I concur with the recommendation in respect for the request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are in a public hearing to consider city council approval of the plan specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the 2025 repair and maintenance of the Iowa Street Parking Garage. Do we have any public input on this item this evening? Seeing none here, anyone virtually?
No.
Thank you. All right. Back to the table then for any discussion. Mr. Resnick.
Well, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Nuckey is here, and I was hoping that he might talk to us about how this changes the planning as far as timing for this. I know it's an exciting project. We've got to get this repair and maintenance done. And is he pretty confident, looking at your confidence level about how we're going to be able to complete this? Thank you.
I'm Jim Bosley, project manager for the project. As far as the scheduling and pushing it back the way we did, it was for the benefit of the city to try to get additional bids and more competitive bids. And talking with the engineer today, Desmond Consultants, they are confident. Now, we extended the bid date to hopefully allow for other bidders to find interest in bidding the project. It's a unique project, and it attracts certain contractors. So I think we learned a lot through the first bidding cycle, timing, the availability of contractors and subcontractors. So a confidence level, you're never 100% confident when you're in a bidding environment, but I feel better now than through the first time. Couple things, extending the bid date and removing some of the items from the base bid and out of there and into the alternate bid. So I think it, it focuses more on the structural needs and things of the, of the project and hopefully focuses their bid and more competitive bid focus on those and the timeline to extend it. So I feel pretty good about it moving into the, into the bidding process.
Thank you. Is this a necessarily complicated bid because of all the legal and, and there's so much going on and material? Is there a time that, is this a six-month project? Is this a year-long, two-month project? What are we looking at?
No, we're bidding it now, we're looking at the end of July to have, receive bids, to open bids, and the completion date is the end of August next year. The materials availability are not, have not been an issue from what we're talking to the contractors and the consultant, what he knows of the bidding environment. It's just the availability of contractors and that timeliness of the general contractors and finding subcontractors to bid on the items within the, within the contract.
I see. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mm-hmm. Anyone else? I'm just going to say a quick thanks for the quick work on this and getting this back on the table in front of us to be able to move this. I know, I know you wanted to, but I'm glad that you were able to get it done. So it's, it was an important project, and I know everybody was disappointed when the bids came in the way they did. So thanks for all the work that you did and the expertise that it took to be able to get that done so quickly. So thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Motion here is to receive and file and adopt the resolution. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Rousell.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Next is public input.
Sorry. I'm jumping the gun, sorry. Ready to go.
At this time, anyone participating in the meeting may address the city council on the action items on the agenda or on matters under the control of the city council. For all in-person attendees, please approach the podium and state your name and address when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Individual remarks are limited to five minutes and the overall public input period is limited to 30 minutes. Under the Iowa Open Meetings Law, the city council can take no formal action on comments given during public input or that do not relate to the action items on the agenda.
Thank you, Adrian, for reeling that very important information. Sorry for jumping the gun there. I would, we'd welcome any public input this evening. If you have some, please come on up. Just state your name and address and, for the record.
My name is Paul Uzell, and I live at 61 North Algonah. And usually I'm here to talk with you about rail travel. Not today. Hopefully, all of you have had a chance to open up your emails because I sent you one earlier today. A very significant issue, one of the things that makes it very relevant is the fact that West Liberty has tried very hard to protect its resident immigrants, and the one that they were trying to protect was deported today to Guatemala. The same thing is happening in downtown LA at MacArthur Park. And sooner or later, now that the ICE budget has been tripled at least, we're going to have issues here with ICE. Now, I'm not arguing. I've been a US immigration officer myself from 78 to 81, working in the Miami International Airport, processing refugees, asylumes, one spy boat. So I've done a number of different things in that field, but the world has changed. And of all places, I believe Dubuque is the place where we should be able to get along with one another, find spaces for people that are good, certainly rein in those who mean harm to others. I personally volunteer, in fact, I've been more or less involved in the issue since I left the Immigration Service. When I was there, I noticed a decided tendency of the workers to look down on people coming to the United States. And that's not what we're made of. That's not the kind of country that was founded. And so I would very much like to see some specific and assertive action by the city council. Also, I've sent the same kind of thing to the county because certainly the county would have to be involved too. I attached, I think, an alligator Alcatraz sign that was going up. We don't need one of those in Dubuque County. We don't need a concentration camp in Dubuque County. We need to welcome people who want to contribute and let them deport true violent criminals. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul, for your comments. Any other public input this evening? Seeing none here, anything virtually? All right, thank you. Okay, we can move on to action items, please.
Action item number one is Parks and Recreation Title X, Chapter 5 Ordinance Amendment Recommendation.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Jones. Move to receive and file the communications and further move that the requirement that proposed ordinance be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which is to be finally passed be suspended.
Second.
Got a motion by Jones, second by Rousell. Mike, please.
Thank you. Intern Parks and Recreation Director Stephen Faisal is recommending city council approval and adoption of the ordinance, amending city of Dubuque Code of Ordinances. There has been some confusion related to Title X, Chapter 5, Ordinance, Section 105B, 22, Open Season and Hours Generally. The current language as interpreted indicates that many parks are closed outside of the regular park season, which is the first Saturday in May through the fourth Sunday in October. While amenities such as restrooms and drinking fountains are not available from November through April, our parks are very much open and usable, and we encourage the community to visit them. The recommended ordinance changes were recommended unanimously by the Park and Rec Commission at their June 10 meeting. I concur with the recommendation in respect for the request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Any discussion? Seeing none here. Motion is to receive and file and waive the three readings. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Rousell.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Mr. Mayor. Mr. Jones.
Move final adoption, final consideration and passage of the ordinance.
Oh, second.
Thank you, Ms. Rousell. Got a motion by Jones, second by Rousell. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Rousell.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number two is Recommendation to Update Human Rights Ordinance Title VIII.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Rousell.
I move to receive and file and further move that the requirement that a proposed ordinance be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed be suspended.
Second by Wethel.
Got a motion by Rousell, second by Wethel. Mike, please.
Thank you. Chief of Human Rights Dr. Josella Aitken Shadle is recommending city council approve an amendment to the city Dubuque Code of Ordinances Title VIII Equity and Human Rights by repealing Title VIII Equity and Human Rights and adopting in lieu thereof a new Title VIII Human Rights. On May 19, 2025, Iowa Senate File 311 was signed into law requiring the repeal of Title VIII Equity and Human Rights. City Attorney Colonel Brumwell update and revise the text as necessary to be in compliance with the state law that becomes effective August 16, 2025, requiring repeal of Title VIII Equity and Human Rights and the adoption of new Title VIII Human Rights. I concur with the recommendation in respect for the request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none. Motion here is to receive and file, waive the three readings. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Rousell.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Rousell.
I move final consideration and passage of the ordinance.
Second by Wethel.
Got a motion by Rousell, second by Wethel. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Rousell.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Jones.
No.
Sprank.
No.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Motion passes five to two.
Action item number three is Proceedings to Complete Action on the Issuance of $761,000 Sewer Revenue Capital Loan Notes State Revolving Loan Fund Program Green Alley Sponsorship Project.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Farber.
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second. Got a motion by Farber, second by Resnick. Mike, please.
Thank you. Chief Financial Officer Jennifer Larson is recommending city council approval of the suggested proceedings to complete action required on the issuance of not to exceed $761,000 of Stormwater Revenue Loan and Disbursement Agreement Sponsorship Project Amendment Green Alley. The Upper B Branch Stormwater Management Utility Revenue Capital Loan Note Series 2019 dated April 12, 2019 will also be amended by decreasing the interest rate from 1.75% to 1.06% to fund the 2024 Green Alley Sponsorship Project, the proceeds of which will be used to pay construction costs for the reconstruction of three alleys in the downtown area. These alleys include the reconstruction of the alleys, two alleys between Iowa Street and Central Avenue from 15th to 17th Streets. The third alley will be reconstructed between Central Avenue and White Street from 17th to 18th Streets. The project will include replacement of water and sewer utilities in the corridor, including replacing private services for water and sewer. The private water services that are led will be replaced from the main to the buildings. The city of Dubuque was approved for partial funding for this project through the Clean Water SRF Sponsorship Project Program. The SRF Sponsorship Project is related to the Upper B Branch Stormwater SRF Loan and will provide $761,000 needed to construct the improvements associated with the three alleys in the downtown area. The funding of the $761,000 in improvements will come from interest payments of the city's Upper B Branch Stormwater Loan, which will be returned to the city to fund the 2024 Green Alley Project. In 2009, legislation was passed in Iowa that allows water utilities that issue debt through the Clean Water State Revolving Fund Program to sponsor and help finance other water quality improvement projects within or outside its service limits. This new funding mechanism called Water Resource Restoration Sponsored Projects will provide cities, did provide cities, counties, local watershed organizations, watershed management authorities, county conservation boards, and soil and water conservation districts a funding source to construct improvements through a watershed that keeps sediment, nutrients, chemicals, and other pollutants out of streams and lakes. Repayment of a standard Clean Water SRF Loan includes the repayment of the original loan amount, the principal, and the cost to finance the loan, interest, and fees. On a clean water loan with a sponsored project, the financing costs are reduced by the amount of the cost sponsored project improvements. Figure one shows a comparison between a standard SRF Loan and a Clean Water SRF Loan with a sponsorship project. As shown, the total cost of the utility, the total of loan repayments, remains unchanged as the cost of funding for the sponsorship project is offset by a reduction in loan financing costs. In essence, two water quality projects are completed for the price of one. The state of Iowa has since discontinued the sponsorship project option for future debt issuances. I concur with the recommendation in respect for the request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none. Okay, motion here is to receive and file and adopt the resolution. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Rousell.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number four is FY 2026 Arts and Culture Operating Support Grant Funding Recommendation.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Resnick.
I move to receive and file and approve.
Second. Got a motion by Resnick, a second by Jones. Mike, please.
Thank you. Arts and Cultural Affairs Manager Bonnie Spurling is recommending city council concurrence with the Arts and Cultural Affairs Advisory Commission the recommended recipients below along with the funding levels of the Fiscal Year 26 Arts and Culture Operating Support Grant applicants. The Fiscal Year 2026 approved budget includes $250,000 for arts and cultural operating support grants. The Arts Commission's Fiscal Year 2026 Operating Support Grant Funding Recommendation listed in alphabetical order by the organization's name as follows. Bell Tower Theater for $17,800, Colts Youth Organization for $21,900, Creative Adventure Lab for $22,200, Dubuque Arts Area Collective for $5,000, almost $800, Dubuque Arts Council for $3,500, Dubuque Chapter of SBEBSQSA Music Men Barber Shop Chorus for $707, Dubuque Corral for $2,744, Dubuque County Fine Arts Society for $4,344, Dubuque County Historical Society for $23,850, Dubuque Museum of Art for $23,850, Dubuque Symphony Orchestra for $22,896, Fly-by-Night Productions for $1,540, Heritage Works for $10,570, Julie and Dubuque International Film Festival for $18,844, Key City Creative Center for $5,108, Northeast Iowa School of Music for $11,588, Pigeon Arts Center for $13,319, Rising Star Theater Company for $9,105, Grand Opera House for $23,214, and Voices Productions for $5,668 for a total award of $248,677.16. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Any discussion? Ms. Rousell. Sorry, Ms. Rousell first, then Mr. Jones.
I was just, I was just noticing how many of the items that are coming before us tonight that say a commission has already looked at this and it's citizens that are sending these recommendations to us, this one in particular. So it's a body of citizens that have looked at these dollars and decided where these funds are, are going. And I think that's really important for residents to know how important it is, number one, for these citizens that are serving on those commissions, and number two, how much we value that input when it does come to our desk. So it was just great to see. So thank you, all your commissioners.
Thanks, Ms. Russell. Mr. Jones?
Just got to say, I appreciate the footnote for the rest of the council that has no idea what SPB Squay is, but it's, case you're wondering, it's the Society for the Preservation and Encouragement of Barber Shop Quartet Singing in America. I know that because I used to get $4 an hour for working the PA crew at senior high school in 1969, '71 when they would have their shows there.
Mr. Jones, you're just an endless fountain of information. I really appreciate that.
Every once in a while.
I really appreciate that about you.
Occasionally, it's useful.
Yeah. Thank you for that information. Mr. Resnick?
Yes, and I appreciate all the work that's gone into it. These nonprofits do fantastic things for our residents. The only one I was kind of unfamiliar with, but I'd love to hear more about, is the Pigeon Arts Center at 1201 Locust. And their mission is to inspire, nurture, and connect. So I don't know if you're listening, Pigeon Arts Center, but if you wouldn't mind coming in, maybe during some kind of, when we have our engagement from citizens, you could maybe tell the community about what you're doing down on 1201 Locust Street. And it sounds like you're reaching out and adding a great center for the arts for everybody in the community. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Resnick. Yeah, Ms. Wethel?
I too want to thank commissioners for all this work. This was a lot of work to look at all of these applications, to give up your time and volunteer to do that. So thank you. I echo the thanks to commission members. I, I just want to focus a minute on the list of what was read and who is receiving this money. This is what creates such a beautiful quality of life for us here in our community. The arts are thriving in Dubuque, but they don't thrive independently. They thrive as a collective with us. And so I'm proud to sponsor this tonight with my vote and look forward to doing so. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wethel. All very well stated. It harkens back to something I mentioned during the work session, just the fact that this is what good partnership looks like between government and community and creating the vibrancy that we want to see in our city. All right, motion here is to receive and file and approve. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Russell?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye. Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number five is FY 2026 Arts and Culture Special Projects Grant Funding Recommendation.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Russell?
I move to receive and file and approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Russell, second by Sprank. Mike, please.
Thank you. Arts and Cultural Affairs Manager Bonnie Spurling is recommending city council concurrence with the Arts and Cultural Affairs Advisory Commission, granting the recommended recipients and funding levels of the Fiscal Year 2026 Arts and Culture Special Project Grant applicants as follows. $8,000 to Dubuque Museum of Art, $4,000 to the Grand Opera House, $3,700 to St. Mark's in Richmond, $8,000 to Dubuque Forward slash Cultural and Creativities Passion Team, $4,500 to Northeast Iowa School of Music, $8,000 to Voices Productions. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none. Motion is to receive and file and approve. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Russell?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye. Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number six is 2025 through 2026 AmeriCorps Funding Awarded.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Sprank?
I motion that we receive and file.
Second.
Got a motion by Sprank, second by Farber. Mike, please.
Thank you. Community Impact Director Antonio Mouzane is sharing information that the funding for the City of Dubuque AmeriCorps program has been approved for the third year of Dubuque's competitive grant cycle, starting September 1, 2025, through August 31, 2026. AmeriCorps competitive grants are structured in three-year increments. Each year within this three-year term, we, we apply for a continuation of City of Dubuque AmeriCorps grant. The city received federal funding for the first year of this grant cycle from September 1, 2023, to August 31, 2024. Year two funding was expected from September 1, 2024, through August 31, 2025. However, during the second year, notices of funding termination were sent on, sent out on April 28, 2025, notifying the city that funding was officially terminated on April 25, 2025, just before the height of our summer program. This left the City of Dubuque without AmeriCorps federal funding from April 25, 2025, through August 31, 2025, for year two of the three-year grant cycle. Although funding was eliminated for the second year, we still applied for a continuation grant to complete the third and final year of the cycle. We received confirmation that funding has been approved on Thursday, June 19, 2025. This funding will be available on September 1, 2025, for the third year of the grant cycle until August 31, 2026. At this stage, this is just for your information. We are expected to receive the final grant agreement in August, and that will be brought to the city council for approval.
Thank you, Mike. Any discussion? Mr. Resnick?
Thank you. I see Mr. Mouzane is, is here, and I was hoping that you, maybe you could tell us how you worked through the challenges of this year and what were the result of this, the funding cancellation. Have you been able to keep anything going? Even that, I mean, I know you've got a, a lot of ideas and innovative things that you do, but that was a, that was a real blow to, you know, your plans. Were you able to rescue any of those programs?
Yeah. Great question. It definitely was a blow to our entire community and several, several community partners. I, I was extremely inspired and impressed by how our community responded. One program in particular was led by our AmeriCorps Program Director, Sarah Burna. She is here today, cultivated a Serve Dubuque program. And so, you know, through the Multicultural Family Center, through the loss of AmeriCorps, the board of directors have decided not to move forward with the Summer Teen Empowerment Program, but through the efforts of Sarah and the teen coordinator and the MFC director and the board, they created this Serve Dubuque program that's focused on city council goals and priorities. It's sixteen teens that are involved, and the foundation is service to the community. Excited to say that they've already been to Eagle Point Park to address some of the needs in partnership with the Parks and Rec Department, and they are going back again on the 15th. And so they are paid stipends, we are partnering with the school districts, so these teens that are involved are also getting a high school credit from serving in their community. And so again, this is just kind of one example of how we responded as a community.
And thank you very much. It's, you know, I didn't know this was happening, but I'm not surprised that you, you've done this and, and your wonderful staff. So I would love to hear, and maybe the mayor could invite you back, to hear some of the results of the project when they're, when they're through. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Antonio, while we have you up here, don't go anywhere too fast. I was super confused by this. I had to read this like three or four times to be able to understand what we were even talking about, because it just seemed, it was not long ago at all. It was just in April that we received this news, and it was pretty devastating news. And then all of a sudden, we hear that the funding for the next round is potentially reinstated. Is this happening in other places? It's okay if you can't answer this question. I mean, you work here, but I'm just curious, you know, in your connections with other cities and other places, are we seeing this across the country in this one?
Several, several other cities and communities that were, funding was terminated, they have seen the same thing. So this is, we're not a unique example, unfortunately. There were cities or programs that were terminated that, that were refunded as well. So.
Well, I just want to say that I'm incredibly thankful that this is the case. And I know that we're still waiting, you know, for confirmation on things, but I, I feel very good about the fact that this funding is returning, just to the United States in general, but to us in particular. I'm, I'm very happy to see this, because we've talked many times about the benefits of these programs and what this funding does.
I, I will just say, I'd be remiss if I didn't say, Ms. Sarah Burna, the AmeriCorps Program Director, she's been a huge advocate and just a fundamental piece in keeping our past AmeriCorps members hopeful, our community partners hopeful, and she continues just to drive the program. So I'm grateful for a phenomenal team, and we're excited to, to relaunch here in September.
Yeah, thanks for sharing that, and thanks, Sarah, for all your work. All right. Seeing no other discussion or questions. Motion here is to receive and file. So Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Russell?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye. Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number seven is funding agreement between City of Dubuque and Dubuque Marina Incorporated, 2024 Boating Infrastructure Tier One Grant Dredge Dubuque Marina.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Jones?
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second.
Motion by Jones, second by Wethel. Mike, please.
Thank you. Assistant City Engineer Bob Schisel is recommending city council approve the funding agreement between the City of Dubuque and Dubuque Marina for the partnership agreement to provide the required local match funding of $100,000 for the 2024 BIG Tier One Grant to perform maintenance dredging at Dubuque Marina, and hereby authorize the city manager to execute said agreement through adoption of the attached resolution. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Any discussion? Yeah, Mr. Resnick?
Yes, so Mr. Van Milligan, I was on the, on the Mississippi a couple days ago, and the person who was the captain of the ship was talking about how the channel's only nine feet deep, that's all that guaranteed, and then, so everybody stays between the buoys, they said, and, and so then you get nine feet. What do we do as far as, do we have a minimum of nine feet also that we're going for, or do we, do we have, do we go deeper because, you know, this is something that, you know, you can't do it very often, it's so expensive? So do you know if we plan for like this the last five or 10 years?
Assistant Public Works Director Bob Schisel is on virtually, so I'm going to ask Bob to address your questions.
Evening, Bob Schisel, Assistant City Engineer. Can everybody hear me okay?
Sure can, Bob.
Okay, great. So for the dredging project, it's, it's a collaborative approach between the city and, and Dubuque Marina. And we have sat down with them and looked at the areas that, that need to be dredged, or we would like to dredge. And we have decided collectively with them that we are going to target about a five-and-a-half-foot dredging depth in the, in the location that, that was identified and agreed upon between the city and Dubuque Marina. And how we arrived at that is, is, is we kind of have to, it's a balance. So we, we know the funding amount that we have, which is approximately $270,000. We estimate what the, the dredging cost will be, and then we back into an estimated volume that we think we're going to be able to afford of dredge material to remove. So it's kind of an iterative process. And so this year, we're estimating that we're going to be able to dredge about 5,500 cubic yards of dredge material. So then we take that, that quantity, and we, we, we do our best to estimate a depth that we can afford to go with, with the dollars that we have.
I see it doesn't have to be nine, nine foot because...
That answered your question.
I, I think it does. Just a couple more, one more follow-up, and obviously those recreational boats are not as heavy as, you know, some of the barges and other things, so it doesn't have to be that deep. Where do you, what, how close you put the material, the, the material is deposited nearby? Is it on some of those man-made islands that I, that I see along the, the Mississippi River? Where, where does it go, though, to dredge it?
So, so per our U.S. Army Corps of Engineers dredging permit, we have a dredge disposal location adjacent to the 16th Street Bridge. So that is our City of Dubuque designated dredge placement location. However, in our recent projects that we've bid over the last two or three years, we've allowed the contractors to either A, use the city's permitted dredge disposal location, or if they have an alternate Corps of Engineers permitted dredge location themselves, that we allow them to take it to that location as well. So the last three years, Newt Marine was the, was, was the low bid contractor, and they actually have their own Corps of Engineers permitted dredge location over in East Dubuque by Keel Harbor. And so they elected to take it to their permitted location.
I see. Thank you very much for this information. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions? Ms. Wethel?
Mr. Schisel, I just have a question regarding the actual location. It, I did a little tour out on the Mississippi to look at this area a little bit so I could understand. It looks like where we've previously dredged is where there's actually the large boat hoist, and this is actually to access the area for boats to come in and out. So it's not just to get, I guess we need to focus on the purpose of this, which is, it's for recreational boating, people that bring their boats to Dubuque, people that want to access our river, that want to enjoy our space and our city. And so this is an investment in folks being able to do that, and I just want to have you maybe describe for folks who know that area, specifically where the dredging will be done.
Well, I'm not, I guess I can't quote Dubuque Marina, and they, they, they have various dock names, like A Dock, B Dock, C Dock. But over the last two years, in 2024, we dredged a, a, a specific location, and that's in your council documents, where we kind of shown that the locations where we dredged in 2024. So we kind of looked at it as a two-phase project, what we dredged last year. And then this year, we're going to continue with that, 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 that same dredging in the same area. And this particular dredging project will be more focused, I guess I would kind of call their, their T Dock, where they have their pump-out facilities. And so really, the, the, the focus of this dredging project is really to kind of dredge in that, in that particular area. I believe the area was kind of highlighted in green in the council memo, in the exhibit that was provided. Sorry, I can't tell you which dock numbers those are.
No, no, not at all. I wasn't expecting that. I just want folks to understand, this seems like a very formal way to, to describe what we're doing, but really, we're doing it so that people can access the river from that space, so that people can get in and out, so that they can enjoy that area and make sure they stop in Dubuque on the way. So thank you for your description.
Anybody else? Seeing no one else here. The motion here is to receive and file and adopt the resolution. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Russell?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye. Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number eight is 2025 Dubuque City Services Guide.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Resnick?
I move to receive and file.
Second.
Got a motion by Resnick, second by Farber. Mike, do you have anything to add to this here?
No, sure.
Okay. So this is just taking a look at the, the city services guide that everyone has received, and I've been surprised by how many positive comments I've received about it, honestly. There's a lot of people that just specifically said that they really appreciated knowing all those services exist and having it all in one place. So it was great to have that, yeah.
And I, I guess I would like to say something. So this is something that we've done before, so we're just updating the publication, but it's an opportunity to let all our residents know how do they access the services that they pay for.
That does lead to a question. How, how long ago was it that we did the last one?
Well, Randy Gale's here. He could tell us how long ago.
It's good to put Randy to work every once in a while.
I appreciate that. Randy Gale, Public Information Officer. Yeah, we've had a city services guide probably for over 15 years. We update it every couple of years, but we haven't done a mailing to every postal address within the city limits for probably close to, I'm guessing, maybe 10, eight to 10 years. So it's been a while since we've done a mailing, because it's a significant cost to do that, but it was time to, it needed some updates. We had department name changes and a lot of changes since the last one. So we, that's, that's what we do.
I would like to mention, though, you say significant cost, but we have a budget for it.
Absolutely. It's part of the, the Public Information Office, sorry, Communications Office, printing budget, the same budget that funds the City Focus Magazine, the City News Newsletter, and Utility Bill Insert that was the, that's on the next agenda item.
Great, that's helpful, Randy. Thank you. Yeah, Mr. Resnick, go ahead.
I, I just would like to say, I was glad to see the city council on that publication, because we are here to serve. So I hope that the citizens know we are one of the services. And when I, before I ran for council, I was wondering who, who to talk to to get some information and to let me know what's going on and why. So I hope that citizens look on us to, to serve. We are there to serve, and I'm glad we're part of that publication. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Mr. Resnick. All right. The motion here is to receive and file that item. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Russell?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number nine is July Utility Bill Insert, Ways to Get Involved.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Sprank.
A motion that we receive and file.
Second.
Motion by Sprank, second by Wethel. Anything to add here, Mike?
Well, it's just an opportunity, a mailing we do with our utility bills to let residents know how they can get involved in their government and as commented early by some, earlier tonight by some council members, that a lot, several of the things on tonight's city council agenda came from our Volunteers Citizen Commission. So just an opportunity to tell people how they can get involved.
Thank you, Mike. Any other comments or discussion here? Then I'll just briefly say, the one thing that I loved about this the most is it, the spectrum of how you can get involved is a very broad spectrum. I mean, it can be as much as just showing up at your neighborhood association block party. You are involved if, when you're doing that, to volunteering, maybe just in the winter for the shovel crew, calling, just calling to be able to help with something. If there is a major pothole somewhere, let, let the city know. That's really important. And then it can go all the way up to some, some really extensive work like joining a board and commission. So this was, this was something I was really glad that we put together in this way. I think it can be really helpful for people to see how much being involved really means and how much we all do to take care of Dubuque. All right. Motion here is to receive and file. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Russell.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number 10 is Reschedule Greater Dubuque Development Corporation Work Session.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Russell.
I moved to receive and file and move the work session to July 21st at 6:00 PM.
Second. And a motion by Russell and a second by Jones.
So just a point of order, the, the request is to reschedule the work session from July 21st to August 18th.
I would amend my motion to say that the work session will be August 18th at 6:00 PM.
Second that just as much as I did before.
We have a motion and a very emphatic second. All right. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Russell.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Next, our council member reports.
All right. We've been off for a couple of weeks here, so what have we been up to? Ms. Russell.
Well, first of all, I participated in the Presbyterian Hunger Outreach on June 28th at the corner of 17th and Main at the Lacy Mansion and we had over 100 and, well, nearly 200 families either walk up or drive up to get food. Councilmember Sprank was also there because his church provided hygiene supplies and our church provided food to those families. So it's always good to remember that there is a need and there are hungry families in our, in our community. I had the pleasure of doing a walkthrough at the new St. Mark's Childcare Center on JFK. It's a great nature themed facility for high quality childcare for kids. Attended the groundbreaking for the Habitat for Humanity Pocket Neighborhood off of Wood Street. It's going to be an exciting opportunity for some residents to be homeowners, combined with some hands-on experience in building that home and some community volunteerism. Attended a business supporter event at the Grand Opera House and it is one of our historic and exciting icons here in Dubuque. And we learned about their upcoming season and how many of our residents take advantage of the programming there. And then lastly, I met with the Hawkeye Area Community Action Agency Outreach Coordinator, Whitney Sanger, to discuss their programs that provide a hand up for our residents in need. And I'm hoping that at some point they'll be able to come and talk to our entire council a little bit more about what HACAP does for our residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor. Mr. Jones.
Fairly, fairly quiet time for me. I was gone for a while and then I had COVID for a while, so didn't make as many meetings as I normally did. It's 24th, though, I was at DRA Board, 25th, DMS Work Session. Also at the Grand Business Partners Event, nice event on the first. Wednesday, the second, Danny invited me to come up to the North End Neighborhood Association. Man, they got it going on. Neighborhood associations are popping all over town and that's great. This particular one's been meeting regularly for a long time. They've always got some spice on the agenda and they've got a lot of folks that show up for it. So Danny and Chuck do have a lot to do with that. And lastly, I just wanted to mention a significant passing in the community. Good friend and former work colleague of mine, Dick Baiki, Iowa State Trooper, worked for 25 years, for 30 years for the patrol, 25 of them here. He's one of the early specialists in stolen vehicle recovery. He's one of the guys that would call around and find all the serial numbers that, that the crooks didn't know were there and affect a lot of arrests. But he's been at Bethany for about seven and a half years. I don't know how I got close to him, but we were about, he was real active in the, in the Iowa State Troopers Association. When I was real active in the Iowa Professional Firefighters Association. So we had a, did a lot of legislative work together. Interestingly, when we were working on some public policy pensions some years ago and Dick was on the board that, that put this together, they were able to cite the Des Moines Register poll where I once trust, number one, God, and number two, the Iowa State Patrol. And they've, I think they've maintained that ranking with most people, so I'm going to miss Dick.
Thanks, Mr. Jones. Ms. Farber.
So the week of, the 17th of June, after our city council meeting, I was in Washington, DC and was able to share the news about the innovative city of Dubuque, Iowa amongst a couple hundred folks and talked about our innovative path, if you will, to AI and some digital transformation, starting out in 2015 was the story with the IBM meters that were put up by IBM in conjunction with the city to today's data center and all of the AI applications that now are hosted in our new center. And it was just really fun to be amongst the few people that talked about municipalities less than 100,000 in population with this kind of innovative AI approach to efficiencies within the operations of our city. And then I was very honored again to represent Dubuque with IBM in a podcast that followed that conference presentation and again to talk about our story. And of course, you know, I had to start out with, if we build it, they will come. And we talked about the fact that the second phase of our data center, hopefully we will co-host and support small businesses and their client servers and then help them with their AI applications. So it was just a really fun week. There were a lot of AI entrepreneurs that are very interested in getting to know our city staff a little bit more to see if their applications could blend in with ours. So it was really fun to represent Dubuque and I daily get linked in applications, notes for some of these young entrepreneurs that want to speak with the city. So I look forward to sharing all that news with the different department heads. So it was a lot of fun. And then I also attended the Sister City meeting that we have and we talked about the International Park here in Dubuque, cleaning it up and doing some fun things with Adrian as well in attendance. And just stay tuned, I'll give them a shout out for our next steps with that. And then also I'd like to give a shout out to Joe Preglar and the data center open house next week where the ribbon cutting will take place and I look forward to attending that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Farber. Mr. Sprank.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since the last time that we met, had to, as usual, live by my calendar. I attended on the 24th, two different meetings. I had hiccups getting virtually into the Greater Dubuque, that I'm part of that board, but no issues with the DRA Board meeting that I was able to attend. And then of course, I volunteered with Ms. Russell at her church's food giveaway, which was a lovely morning. And then of course, the grand had also invited a number of us council folks because they were looking for some donor, donor stuff. So that was a good evening as well. Fourth of July was at the lovely, the Ham House, got to see the mayor. I'll let you fill in about what you got happened. Then on the fifth, some neighbors decided to throw a nice barbecue that lived down the street from us. They, they're all the ones that are all living in those, the Holy Trinity Apartments. And it was a really nice building, got a mini tour of that and they just decided to do their second time, just throwing together a neighborhood barbecue. And then yet last night, the Table Mound Group, which I've been helping them out, they decided to do like a barbecue that I was gladly at, so. But there's always something more to go on these next couple of weeks. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Resnick.
Thank you. We've talked a lot about arts organizations tonight, so I thought I'd let you know. First of all, I saw the Grand Opera Production of, of, what's it, You Just Don't Want to Dance. It's a town that doesn't, you can't dance. That's it, Footloose. I love the song. The, the people there, the cast was fantastic. And, you know, it's a, it's taken from a movie and there's a lot of popular songs and so we enjoy that. I also wanted to mention Tri-State Wind Symphony. I'm conducting for them on Thursday. So they are like a community band, but there's 100 folks in it and they have five concerts a year down at the Alliance Amphitheater. So I am conducting this Thursday and it's on this day, you know, on July 10th, you know, what happened on, on July 10th. And so we have eight different songs about what happens. We have some wonderful local singers as well joining us. And so if folks want to look at tsws.org, it has a complete schedule. But again, another great arts community in our, in our midst. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Well, I, I do have a few things. I took a pie in the face for the Fourth of July at the Ice Cream Social, which was super fun and it was for the benefit of the River Museum and the Dubuque Historical Society. So that was a great cause. But we did a, just, this goes back a few weeks, but a virtual town hall for air service through the chamber and Director Dulce was there. And it was, it was a good, good discussion from a community, community-wide to be able to update everyone on our progress with air service and where we are. So we had a good discussion that day. I did attend the U.S. Conference of Mayors meeting. I was out of town for a few days doing that. And a couple of things I want to mention from that. One, you know, it's always interesting when you go to these and you get to talk to people from all over the United States and see kind of where they are and what they're doing. And one of the things that I routinely recognize when I do that is that we are doing really well on a few things. When it comes to housing, I mean, we are ahead of a lot of other places. There are, it is a persistent discussion at these conferences about how are we dealing with housing? How are we dealing with homelessness and all these different things that are going on? And while we, we continue to have concerns, continue to have challenges, we are moving faster in building housing and developing housing than most other places are. And I hope that everyone can recognize that. I think it's a difficult thing to see when you're, you know, in the weeds all the time and you're here, but when you go and talk to people from sometimes major cities in the United States and you see that this, it's going very well for us, it's always uplifting. Infrastructure is another one that's going very well for us. You know, we, this was, you know, from a standpoint of being able to have, for instance, our RACE grant, to be able to build the overpass at 14th Street, that is a major benefit. There's always infrastructure discussions at these, at these meetings, too. But one of the things that came up, you know, we've been talking a little bit about the fact that we've got some challenges with sewer capacity and those types of things. I'm recognizing how common that is in the United States. It is not something that is uncommon at all. Talked to someone from California who said, yeah, if we don't take care of this in the next year, we, we need to build an entire new water and resource recovery center essentially because of everything that's going on. So it is interesting to have those discussions. I will say that I had the great opportunity to present at one of the panels and was asked to discuss the B Branch, as usual, because everyone wants to talk about the B Branch, but then also the Teen Resiliency Corps. And it was the Teen Resiliency Corps that caught people's attention, to the point where the next session was the open plenary lunch, plenary lunch where everyone was there and Dubuque got a specific shout out about the Teen Resiliency Corps from the mayor of Albany, which was, I thought was fantastic. I was very surprised and very happy to see that, but it was great. And it was very interesting to be on C-SPAN for something like that. That was not something that I'd experienced before. The final thing is not so much fun. We had a lot of conversations about political violence that was immediately following the assassinations that occurred in Minnesota. There were several mayors from the Minneapolis region there and we had a mayor's only meeting where we talked just about the, the challenges of this. And I'll leave you with the one thing that shocked me the most. Somebody asked the question, raise your hand if you've never been threatened ever in your role. And two people raised their hand in that room. Two mayors in the United States who were attending the U.S. Conference of Mayors, probably about 150 to 200 people, two of them raised their hand. I was, that one made me pretty sad. And, but every time I go, I'm, I'm happy to see so many dedicated public servants working for their, their cities throughout the country. Finally, I just want to say thanks to everyone for the Third of July fireworks and airshow. From all that I can tell in discussing it with everyone, people did have patience, people did have understanding in all the challenges of the, the construction going on down there and made it a fun time, even with the weather shortening the airshow a little bit. But thank you for, for everything that was, was done in that. It was a, it was a great night and then followed up by the, the annual Country Club fireworks on the July 4th.